Okay, we're going to convene tonight's meeting of the Board of Selectmen for April 11th, 2012. First item is Board Acceptance of the Agenda, and Rick used to ask, and I think it was a good idea, we have acceptance tonight?
We got it.
We got it? Excellent. Announcements, Libby?
Okay, we've got two. Again, we have road paving that's going on on Upper Main Street in Nantucket, oh, Upper Main Street here in town, and New Street in Sconset. Oh, that will commence, I'm sorry, where's Kara? Not here yet.
Nope, she's coming.
Fall 2012.
Fall 2012. I didn't even read it before now. And then we have 2012 Committee Board and Commission vacancies coming up. I think in your packet there might be some information about this, the list and the schedule and the timeline. It's all on the website, and we'll be getting out letters very shortly to all of the incumbents, asking them to indicate whether or not they wish to be considered for reappointment. And then people can get the committee interest forms from the website.
So the incumbents file the forms? I don't know.
The incumbents just sign something that indicates that they want to be reconsidered. They don't have to fill the form out again.
Have we looked, reviewed this list and made sure that all these committees are still active? Have we not?
Sort of.
Sort of, okay.
Sure, that may be something to do going forward.
Okay, any questions? I don't know about the rest of you, but when I look at the forms where they come back in, sometimes, you know, they usually say, "Oh, I've served on three committees and I want to serve again," but it doesn't give you much else about their background. And I'm not quite sure whether, like, you look at a resume, you sort of get education jobs or something, but we don't get that. I'm not sure whether we should or how other people feel about it.
There's a space on the form for their work history and backgrounds, so maybe sometimes they don't fill it out and sometimes they do.
Usually it's not for anyone. Sometimes you have to call up and say, "Hi, who are you?" So if you don't know.
Right, well, we may take a look at the form. I'm not sure anyone has for a while, so, you know, it might be useful. Maybe we'll stick that on some...
In looking at the list, I would say downtown revitalization might not be active currently, and downtown study obviously hasn't finished yet, but I think the rest of them, me at least, if not more regular.
You know, it's like a pretty active group. All right, any other comments on that, on announcements, any, Libby?
Uh, no, that's it.
Okay. Public comment, anyone here tonight to speak on some matter that is not currently on the agenda? Seeing none. New business, no new business that I know of. Approval of minutes, warrants impending contracts, approval of payroll warrant for week ending 8 April 2012, comments, objections, seeing none. That is approved. Approval of treasury warrant for 11th of April 2012. Again, no objections, that is approved. Approval of pending contracts for April 11th, 2012. And do I need to read this? Libby, a set forth on the spreadsheet identified as Exhibit 1, which exhibit is incorporated herein by reference?
Yes, that is some new wording that was recommended by Town Council as the result of a recent open meeting law complaint.
Okay, so I just read it.
Thank you.
As my question. Do you want to go through the contracts?
Sure. There are three. A supply contract for DPW with J.F. McDermott for $1,500. That's a purchase of root saws for cleaning sewers, that's coming out of the DPW budget. That may be the sewer enterprise fund budget. Another supply contract for DPW with Rusty's Outdoor Power, $6,119. Purchase of a new mower for Park and Rec DPW, that's coming out of DPW's general fund budget. And then we have our three-year propane contract. This was bid out recently. The successful and only bidder was Yates Gas. The total amount over the three-year period is $330,000. Let me see if I have some more information on that.
Is it a per gallon bid?
It's a per gallon bid. There's a 41 cent per gallon addition charge for fiscal '13. There was only one bidder. It's a different price per gallon. It includes operating expenses and profit, that's part of the bidding. Last year there were two bidders, this year there was one.
What was the price last year?
Um, I don't have, oh...
Did we go to what, they're like floating prices?
Yeah, they're floating prices.
They stand something in Boston, then they are tacking up, everybody tacked on X amount per gallon, and that's really what they got.
It's hard to specify what it is per gallon, because it does float, and then there's the additional per gallon charge.
Right, but I think the per gallon charge, the additional, is what they make for servicing and processing, and the rest is the charge, sort of like the wholesale price for the fuel itself. Is that, does that make sense?
Yes.
And the other local firm chose not to bid?
Apparently.
Whitey?
Yes, the $330,000, if we exceed that or underrun it, can we exceed that, or what happens if you...
That's just an estimate of what we're expecting to spend over the three-year period.
Okay, so the bid really is per gallon?
Right.
So this is a three-year bid, but they're saying there's a 41 cent increase for 2013?
For fiscal '13, it's a dollar forty per gallon plus the 41 cents. For fiscal '14, it's a dollar twenty-five per gallon. For fiscal '15, it's a dollar twenty-five per gallon. I believe in those two years, currently, that is without whatever this other charge is, surcharge.
And the surcharge is the additional cost?
For fiscal '13, I think because propane is...
Has exceeded what they bid. So it's based on the Boston price, is that...
Well, that's what it was before.
Or the fluctuation of national?
It just sounds different, because if it's a fixed price, you know, it might be helpful to sort of go over that next week if we could. It's just sort of interesting.
We can see if Diane can come in and explain it. It's not really that straightforward.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what it sounded like.
So it might be, that's a good reason to have her come in.
Is there any impact in holding it? Do you know? It's for next fiscal year, right?
Yeah, it's for next fiscal year.
So we should be fine, just hold it till next week?
Yeah, approve it, get the information.
I'd just like a little more clarification of how it works.
Yeah, exactly.
So you're okay to approve it? Should we do that?
I don't know, if you only got one bidder, I mean, what are you going to do?
Right.
Well, maybe you could approve it and we could provide you a memo or a review by Diane in person at a future meeting to explain how it specifically works.
But I think it is kind of disappointing, because I remember, just one other comment, this came up some time ago. The school is acquiring things, and there was a state contract, and we couldn't get on the state contract because they won't deliver to us or something, and so is that still an issue here? I don't know.
It is, and I don't think that was for propane, that was for fuel oil.
For fuel oil.
We had some activity around that, too, with our reps and stuff, and still it didn't work. That was frustrating.
One of the reasons was there wasn't a storage...
Oh. Libby?
I have a question for Carl on the mower. What kind of mower is a car? $6,100. Is it a ride mower, is it a tractor?
It's actually a walk behind, but they can stand on it.
Forty-eight inch, something like that?
Yes, it's a large one, and the reason we want that particular model is it's got a wide cut on it that can go under the stuff on the edge of the road, and with all the brush cutting that we've been doing, we would like to keep it mowed so that we can possibly cut back on the amount of brushing that we have to do.
So is this used for the roads, or is this for the plain fields, or both?
Both.
Both?
Okay, any other questions? That's Cooper. Oops, sorry.
Rich Cooper, just a question about the gas. Is that priced strictly for the fuel, or does that include service for the equipment?
It's part of what we're trying to figure out.
Providing propane gas to all town departments and entities. Any service charges, I guess, would be extra.
Okay, Whitey, I'm sorry.
Well, that was sort of all town departments. That does not include the enterprise accounts?
It doesn't include the airport, it includes sewer and solid waste if they use propane. It doesn't include water.
And our island home?
Yes, it includes our island home.
Bruce?
In the normal course of things, do we make an effort to solicit more than one bid? If, it seems odd that we have two gas companies and only one bids.
Well, it's advertised publicly. People are encouraged to look at the newspaper and on the postings in Town Hall. There are, there's a bit of an issue about soliciting people to bid. I mean, it's...
Okay.
But procurement officials are cautioned against that.
Okay.
For favoritism purposes.
Right.
Have they bid in the past, the other gas company?
Yeah, last year we did.
Last year, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So maybe we ought to wait, Patty. I think we've got enough questions going on.
I think so, too. Why don't we hold that one, Libby, and we will bring that back on some future date with more, some explanations, I should say. All right, any other questions on the other contracts? Nope, seeing none, those will be approved. All right, so we move on to citizen departmental requests. Planning Office request for acceptance of deed from county to town for parcel of land formerly part of Nonantum Avenue as shown on plan entitled, "Plan for discontinuance of a portion of Nonantum Avenue prepared for the town of Nantucket, Massachusetts, dated July 20, 2009, prepared by Nantucket Surveyors LLC and recorded with Nantucket County Registry of Deeds as Plan Number 2009-39 pursuant to vote on Article 94 of 2012 Annual Town Meeting, continued from the 28th of September 2011." We also have the deed in our packet. Any comments, questions about the request for acceptance?
This is the street, it looks like Nonantum, being a portion of Nonantum Avenue.
That's what I read it as.
Yeah, okay.
All right, any other questions? All right, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. All right, we now go to Town Manager's Report. Marine and Coastal Resource Department Water Quality Report.
Just a quick, little bit of background, we've been working on this for some time now, and Mr. Atherton and I had talked some time ago about having Marine come in and review budget history of the waste, the, what's it called again?
The water waste.
Improvement funds, I was going to say wastewater, and what the budget history has been there, what types of expenditures have been paid for out of that fund, including the funding of the water quality program for the coming fiscal year and prior fiscal year. So Dave and Tara are here to review that, and I think there's a couple of slides.
Good evening, Dave Fromm, I'm with the Marine Department. First of all, I've got some good news for the, for the town. We were notified earlier this week from the Division of Marine Fisheries that Matickett Harbor, for the first time in 15 years, is going to be open and unrestricted for shell fishing. That's been a historic closure from July 1st to December 31st annually, from Smith Point to Eel Point. So, like I said, for the first time in 15 years, it's going to be open unrestricted to shell fishing beginning now. So that's some good news. I guess that's, that's what you get when you continue to strive to have better water quality and protect our waters. Tara Riley, our shellfish biologist, is going to give you an update on the water quality sampling from 2011, and what we're planning on doing in 2012, and then I'll take you through the Waterways Improvement Fund expenditures and budget.
Forward, thank you. In 2011, we contracted with the Wampanoag Indian, or the Wampanoag Environmental Lab in Martha's Vineyard, and that contract was for the water quality sampling. The cost was $30,200. So the Marine Department, myself, along with two other interns, were in charge of collecting the field samples, as well as the physical parameters associated with those samples. The physical parameters include things like dissolved oxygen, temperature, salinity, conductivity, and secu depth readings. So as far as frequency goes, for Nantucket Harbor, the map's behind you. We did, we started in June and we sampled through September, so in June we sampled twice a month, July was also twice a month, August was three times a month, and September was once a month. We have eight stations in Nantucket Harbor. All of these stations, for both harbors and for the ponds, are historical stations. These are areas that have been sampled in the past by previous biologists, so we kept them the same just to make sure that we have consistent data and we can analyze it and, you know, note any trends that might be occurring. So the only new station that's been added is Station 8N. It's off of Shimo Bend, and that was added last season due to concerns over in the Monomoy-Shimo area with nutrients. So if you want to move on to the next slide, please. This is Matickett Harbor. There are four stations in Matickett Harbor. Three are actually out in the harbor, one is in Hither Creek. Matickett Harbor is actually sampled one time per month. The reason for this is, I think it was decided that, you know, the boating activity isn't quite the same in this harbor as it is in the other harbor, in Nantucket Harbor. So both harbors are sampled via the shellfish boat. Also on this map, we have Long Pond. There are two sampling stations in Long Pond, and these are sampled via kayak, and they're also sampled one time per month. This is Homack Pond. There are five sampling stations. This pond is open twice a year, usually in April and the end of September. It's also sampled one time per month via kayak. My Iconic Pond, this is a freshwater pond, this is, we have three stations here, and this is sampled via kayak. And this is the last pond, Sacaja Pond, you know, four historical stations here, same thing, via kayak and sampled one time per month. So for 2011, the data actually wasn't released until February of 2012 this year, probably the middle of February due to, you know, a few, a few issues. So right now, we're currently going through that data and we're analyzing it, because the report was not included into the contract. So it's up to, you know, myself and others in the Marine Department to analyze it and compare it to previous years. So that's something that we're in the middle of doing right now, and I expect to have it on the web and finished in the next few weeks. For 2012, we just put out an invitation for bid, specifically looking for applicants that will be able to meet our TMDLs, our Total Maximum Daily Load, specific for Nantucket Harbor and Matickett Harbor. We sent out, you know, the invitation and included our maps with our sampling stations, but did not include, you know, how frequent we've been sampling in the past, because we'd like to hear from the people that are applying if our sampling is adequate, or if we need to increase it or decrease it in order to meet the TMDLs, to make sure that if there's areas where we can cut down on labor or costs, you know, we certainly would like to know about that. The total labor put into a program like this each season between two to three people combined is about 433 hours. So it's a huge labor and time commitment, and that's all I have.
And just, the history on that is, if you remember, that we had, for many years, we had two biologists. One was dedicated to shellfish propagation, the other one was dedicated to water quality. When we lost the biologist and the hiring freeze went into effect, we didn't have the second biologist for water quality, so Tara, since she's been here, has picked that up, and it is a lot of, a lot of work. The, did anybody have any questions about the water quality sampling for this year?
Yeah, two questions. The number of TMDL tests, does the UMass Dartmouth set that in order to meet the criteria? How do you determine how many tests you would have?
I'm not really sure what that answers.
I can't. The, we, one of the benefits this year is that we have Woodard and Kern onboard, working with us for the estuaries and the, and the TMDLs. So they're going to review the sampling protocols and the frequency to make sure that it meets the TMDL criteria. So we really want to take a good, fresh look at it, like Tara said, to make sure, are we sampling too much, are we sampling too little? I mean, last year we did over, almost 400 samples total. So Woodard and Kern is going to help us with, with that for the TMDL.
Yeah, I didn't understand why the bidders would be deciding how many samples.
Well, we want a fresh look at it to see, are we sampling too much, or are we sampling too little? What we're sampling now is what we've been doing for many, many years. Now, now that it's mandatory, because we have a TMDL to meet, we want a fresh look at it.
Yeah, I thought it was kind of difficult there, that it was, the state is looking at us and we're getting the bidders to come in with a frequency, and I didn't know...
It'll be up to, it'll be up to Woodard and Kern when we're reviewing the bids to make sure the frequency is correct.
And the second question was, how come Matickett Harbor is permitted now? What's changed?
Well, there's two, there's two criteria here. When we're talking about total maximum daily load, and we're talking about, we're talking about the total water shed load, we're talking about septic's fertilizer, storm drains, road runoff, all those inputs are what make a TMDL. What I reported earlier is for shellfish. It's for the consumption of shellfish. It has, it has healed itself enough so the shellfish can be consumed. Totally different parameters, but very good news nonetheless. I think septic inspections in Matickett and Hither Creek are underway. Many septic upgrades have gone in. You know, it, it's, it's a win situation, it's a, it's a good thing. But I think the septic's, I think the septic inspection program has, has helped considerably in Matickett already.
Are they using the, our measurements as far as the...
No, no, for the, for the fecal coliforms for shellfish consumption, the state biologist comes down and we take them out. We take them, Tara takes them to several land sites, we, the Marine Department takes the biologist by boat to several sites, and we do that every couple months. But no, that's, that analysis is done by the state shellfish laboratory, yeah.
Any other questions? Mike, Rick?
Yeah, just to follow up on Whitey's first question about the, are, if people are coming back and are they giving a price in addition to a recommendation on the number and, on the frequency of samples and what you're sampling for? Because it seems to me if some guy comes back and he says, "I'll do two," and the other guy says, "I'll do 10," how do you get a price comparison?
We have a, you know, a contingency in there, you know, according to the program that they come up with to make sure that it's adequate enough. And, I mean, part of the reason is, we have a very thorough and extensive sampling program that was set up originally by S Mast in 2010. So we're measuring not only, you know, a sample at each site, but three different depths at each site, and, you know, if you can measure a mid-depth at one site and save time and money in a sample that way and get the same answer as you can doing three, then I think that would be some information that you would want to know.
I'm still not sure how that ties back to the price part of it, you know?
Less sampling, better price.
Right, but I mean, then, so it's as much the system and the price as it is the number of samples, but I just think it sounds like it makes it difficult to compare one bidder to another, but anyway.
Libby, I'm sorry.
If we're overtesting, then we can cut our costs. And, you know, the, we're going back to 2010 standards as to how it was, water testing was to be done. Like Tara said, the main thing is the three levels. If we can get away with one mid-level test, that'll speed up the time, speed up the number of samples that have to be analyzed, it would cut our costs greatly.
No, I'm with you there, Bob. If two guys come, two guys come in, and one guy says, "You only have to sample twice a month," or something, the other guy says, "Four," and if they're bidding per sample, so to speak...
Well, see, that's where I would jump in and say, that the overall plan is probably what you would be looking at. So if you come and meet the criteria, minimal criteria, and then add to that possibly, I'm not sure that the proposal I would go for would just be based on the number of samples. In fact, it may be counterintuitive that fewer samples are actually a better plan. So I think that their assessment of the proposals is going to be what's key here with respect to what the end result is. So, so it's going to not depend on the number, basically.
With the consultants in.
With the consultants in.
I have one quick question. When it comes to sampling the ponds, Tara, is it labor intensive to do it by kayak? Would it be better with a little pond boat and an outboard to zip through the ponds?
It would definitely be a lot better, and, you know, to do it that way.
Yeah, quicker. You could get more, get them all done in one day instead of three days. I mean, I'm just looking at how far you got to row there, and I'm thinking that's going to take some time.
Takes a lot of time.
Excellent.
Okay, one other follow-up. And do we hope to get, Dave, you and I have talked about this over the years, a time graph so that we know the nutrient level for all the testing for the past X number of years?
Yeah, in, in talking to Woodard and Kern, the answer to that is yes. We're actually, we have some citizens groups, and Mariah Mitchell are actually putting a proposal together. But in talking to Woodard and Kern, and now with your new CWMP update, that, that information may not be as important as we thought it was. We have data back to '89, we have data on the web from 2006 to date, but I think what's important is the consistency over time, and we are still going to do that big spreadsheet, because I really think that that would be a good baseline to have for the future. But, you know, we're working with Woodard and Kern, again, we've done this on our own for many years. It's, it's really kind of nice to have some, some learned help.
All right, any other questions from the board? Thank you both very much.
On the Waterways Improvement Fund, the Waterways Improvement Fund has three sources of revenue. The mooring permit fees that are collected by the town, the mooring rental agreement that we have with a private contractor, and one half of the boat excise tax that's collected by the town. The other half of the boat excise tax is, that's collected goes to the, to the general fund and is used to defray the cost of the billing, et cetera. So you can see there, the revenues, the revenues are, are pretty, pretty flat. They, we're anticipating this year our revenues to be around $300,000. You can see in the last two years, they've been 288 and 291. To date, we've collected $197,000 in revenue for this year, but we have our demand out right now for the mooring permits, so we'll be collecting another, I'm estimating somewhere around $120,000 over the next couple months. So that, that revenue is, is pretty flat. It looks like around $300,000. As far as the expenses are concerned, well, let's talk about the fund balance. The fund balance, you see, we have, we had a very healthy fund balance of $496,000 coming into this fiscal year. And just to remind everybody, the money in the fund balance comes from the remainder after you've paid your expenses out of your collected revenue. Whatever remains for that fiscal year falls to the fund balance and can be used in, in out years. So the money's not lost, it's collected, and it's, I liken it to a savings account, the money falls to the fund balance. So we started this fiscal year with a fund balance of $496,000. To go on with the expenses, if Erica would go.
While you're on the revenue, just one question. It looks like '13 is going to be down a fair amount, is that the estimate?
Well, you were talking about roughly, what, 300 for the past couple of years? Right.
Down to 200 in your estimate?
These, these came from finance, I think that's a projection. I would project it to be around, my projection is 305.
You think the same kind of level?
Yes, because if you remember, back in January or late last year, you, you approved some, some fee increases, so I'm, I'm saying it's, it's going to be at least 305, if not a little bit more.
Whitey?
Why do you keep such a large fund balance?
Well, there's, there's a couple of good reasons. One is, if you, if you need to buy a boat, or if you need to buy an engine that you've blown, or I've used this money in the past to leverage against the Seaport Council for grants, you know, for a 25% match on a $400,000 or $500,000 project, it's, it's nice to have that fund balance, and I haven't been back to capital in, in several years, and I think you're going to see in the expenses that we're able to maintain the boats and the vehicles, the, the docks, the piers, and the buildings out of this fund. But it's nice to have that, that cushion of revenue when an opportunity comes along, you don't... When an opportunity comes along, you don't have to worry about where you're going to get the money. You know, it's been averaging this year. You'll see in the expenditures why it was 496. We just had a very frugal year, I guess. We just didn't have a lot of expenditures. We had purchased pretty much everything that we had needed and done the maintenance that we had needed to do. I hope that answers your question. It's just, it's nice to have a, about a one-year's fund balance. You know, we haven't, it's not a burden on the general fund, which, when it comes in these lean times that we've been in recently, I think it's kind of a nice thing to have.
Do you need approvals if you wanted to buy a boat? Or can you just pay for it out of there?
I need approvals. We have to appropriate the money at town meeting and the town manager needs to approve it.
But for emergency?
Emergency, what would normally happen is very similar to what we dealt with in Miss China, we would probably, if we had an emergency, we would go to the Fincom, get a transfer and then pay them back.
All right. Any others?
The expenditures, I can take you through very quickly. This is 2009 expenditures. I broke them out into major categories, salaries. The salaries here, you're going to see, are 50% of the assistant harbor master's salary is paid for out of this account because they primarily deal with mooring issues. 50% of the administrative assistant's salary is paid for out of there. And the mooring enforcement officer's salary is paid out of there. Aids to navigation, just to remind everybody, we set 125 private aides that are registered with the Coast Guard. That's all the buoys that you see in all the harbors, Matticat, Pulpus, Children's Beach, all the rock markers, that program. Structural repairs, it's basically what it says there, buildings, electrical and plumbing. The Marine Department building at 34 Washington Street, the boathouse, the two workshops, docks, floats and ramps, again, the town pier, very large structure, floats we have in Matticat at the ramps and are at the landings, and then the three boat ramps that we have. Very straightforward, mechanical, vehicle, boat, fuel. Water quality, this particular year, we spent $1,936 for water quality. That was to pay an environmental firm to do the analysis for us for that particular year. Again, equipment purchases, vehicles, boats and engines, those are large ticket items. Replacement equipment, safety pumps. In this case, pumps are bulk de-watering pumps for boats that are sinking and firefighting boats, firefighting pumps. We maintain firefighting pumps and de-watering pumps in both harbors, Matticat and Nantucket Harbor, on a year-round basis. And then office supplies is straightforward.
Are you going to take us through the other two years or are you just going to give us highlights on difference?
They're pretty much the same. There's some glitches. I will point out, if you'll back up just one, right here, because the questions that came out were the water quality. Here, we paid $2,000 for an estuaries report. If you want to click to the next slide. This year, we paid...
Did David have gone to like UMass Dartmouth?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Here's $20,000 for the estuaries report. This is the preliminary work that was done that formulated the draft TMDL for Matticat and Long Pond. So, the estuaries report, analysis and report, that was the $20,000.
So, again, that went to UMass Dartmouth?
Yes, sir. And then the next one?
And no water quality that year, right?
No. Water, if you want to back up.
I'm sorry. 11 was the year we had grants from private?
Yes, sir. That's exactly right. And then 2012, we had $10,000 for the final TMDL for Matticat for the estuaries report. And water quality, as Tara pointed out, we spent $24,400 with the Wampanoag Environmental Lab on the Vineyard. That was also funded $10,000 from private donations, but...
So, we had 10 plus R24 was the whole program? $35,000?
Yes, sir. There's one glitch on this particular slide. You see under boats, vehicles and engines, you see a large expenditure. If you see on the previous slide, there was no expenditure for vehicles. The vehicle was purchased, or I'm sorry, was ordered in February and wasn't received until August. So, that's why, when you look at this, if you wonder why there's so much money spent, the vehicle was ordered in February, didn't get purchased until this fiscal year. And then the $24,000 for the boat is the appropriation you approved the other night for the new shellfish water quality boat.
Bobby?
Dave, I wasn't looking at the year, but the first slide we had up there was $52,000 in salaries?
Yes.
How did it go to, from 2009 to 2011, we went up 27,000 in salaries? Is there more people being paid out of the fund?
No. Well, the, no. Folks are making a little bit more money. And the assistant harbor master's salary, she got a reclassification to a higher level. And then when our administrative assistant came over from the Conservation Commission, she was at a higher salary level. So, it doesn't take much to get $25,000 more per year.
Okay. Other questions? Whitey?
What, where do you store all of your aids to navigation?
We store them out at the lifeguard house out at O'Kewa. We have them all set there in order with all the chain and all the buoys and all the sinkers.
Okay. Chris?
How many years have we been doing the comprehensive testing that you described earlier?
For water quality?
Yeah.
Since 1989.
Okay. It doesn't seem as if we had, we've spent enough money in some of those earlier years to fund the kind of program that you demonstrated.
Well, it was a lot simpler when we had the labor to do the work.
We were doing it ourselves.
We did it ourselves.
Okay.
But, what we did pay for on an annual basis was the analysis. But then we had someone to write the report. We wrote the report in-house. So, that's kind of the problem. It's expensive and the problem now that Woodard and Kern keeps telling me is now that we have these TMDLs to meet, the sampling now has become mandatory. So, we're in for the long haul on this.
Rick?
And are we still doing the labor in the sense that we go out and physically collect the water? So, we're still contributing a lot of cost in that way?
Right. We've done an in-kind, we've done an in-kind cost analysis on that and it's about $20,000 with people and boats and fuel.
Just in the 13 budget, do you have about the same kind of number budgeted for water quality? Do you know?
I do. Actually, I, in my budget for this coming year, I have $45,000. $45,000 set aside.
So, 24 last year, 45 next year, thinking we won't get contributions and the town is meeting its obligation?
Most definitely.
Gotcha.
We've been very grateful, but you can't count on that.
All right. Any other questions? I think that's it. Dave, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Second item, town manager's report, taxi advisory committee update.
Thank you. As you probably know, I have a taxi advisory committee that meets regularly and discusses various taxi issues and from time to time comes forward with suggestions for amendments to the taxi rules and regulations or other taxi-related items. And I think what we probably should do here is, in your packet is, I think, a memo from the group, a taxi advisory committee report, it's entitled. And it has a number of suggestions and amendments, some of which we will be putting forward to you in a public hearing setting to make actual changes to the regulations, others which just don't make sense from a regulatory or enforcement point of view, or simply do not work. I don't know if it's worth going through that. They had four specific recommendations, maybe I'll just quickly let you know. The first one had to do with adding a requirement into the regulations that dome lights must be working, must be on and working at night and that there should be a fine established for that. We don't see the need for that. It's not really a public safety issue. So, that's something that we can mention to taxi operators if their lights are not on, but we don't think it's worth putting it into the regulations. The second was that no taxi operator's license shall be issued until the proposed licensee has read the rules and regulations. There is no way for us to know if they've read them or not. They can certainly sign to the effect that they've read them, but we can't possibly enforce that. Taxi driver addresses currently are posted, are contained on the license, which is posted in the cab. And the suggestion is to remove the actual addresses. They are on file with the police department, so we're fine with that. That's administrative and we can simply get that removed. We can work on that. The fourth is no smoking in the vehicle when the car is empty of fares. We, I think, believe in looking at the regulations that that's already implicit in the regulations. They should not be smoking in the cab, ever. So, that's certainly something that can be enforced now by the police department, I believe. Chief, correct me if I'm wrong. They also had a number of concerns that aren't really items that would be put into the regulations. But, some of them are things we can deal with administratively and some of the taxi advisory committee can, and we can help them with this, get out the word to the various taxi owners and operators about some of these things. Just quickly going through them. Fare receipts given out should be offered to every customer. Yes, we can tell the owners to do that. The owner-manager must make sure that drivers are aware of and compliant with the rules and regulations. That should be the responsibility of the owner-manager, always. That shouldn't have to be emphasized. Not all complaints are being followed up on by the Nantucket Police Department with owners and managers and drivers due to lack of manpower and staffing issues. I don't think we completely agree with that statement. Sometimes the complaints are not sufficiently presented. Sometimes they do not have enough information with them. And sometimes they are simply deemed or it's determined that they don't need to be followed up on. But, for the most part, if there is a valid complaint, it is followed up on, I believe. They would like a dedicated officer to handle taxi issues and complaints similar to the school resource officer. That's just not feasible with the resources that we have. There's been an issue with alleged rogue cabs and what they call off-island taxi vehicles with out-of-state license plates that have been used, as they say in the report, at least once during the summer of 2011. Situations like this should be avoided in the future. I think there was a recent meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, with some of the taxi operators and the committee about this issue. And as it can be pursued, it is pursued. Correct? Thank you. The Board of Selectmen should take action to enforce taxi rules and regulations in consultation with the police department. I'm not really certain what that exactly means. The police department and town administration are tasked with enforcing the taxi rules and regulations. The board really simply amends them from time to time. And if there's an action that requires the board's intervention by the regulations, then that is brought forward to you. Please consider the taxi advisory committee and potential discussions that affect rules within the taxi community. We do try to do that. I think the issue being referred to might be the parking sign issue from last year. Other than that, most of the taxi issues that we come across are referred to the committee. They believe meters are still not viable. I guess that's just a general comment, perhaps in fear that that issue might return. There is a deep concern among owners and operators within the taxi community that certain companies or people are not following the rules and regulations. Should these concerns not be properly addressed, the level of frustration will continue and will escalate. I'm not really sure what that means either. If there are people who are not following the rules and regulations and there are specific violations, they should be brought forward with detail, not vague, unsubstantiated complaints. And that has been an issue in the past. They are also asking the town to consider regulating charter vehicles, carrying over 10 people but no more than 15. And my understanding, and I think the chief has been tasked with working on this, is that that's simply not legal under mass state law.
That's something we discussed this morning at the taxi committee meeting, apparently that was discovered by one of our members. And so, we asked to table that specific point.
Okay. Thank you. And this report is from March and I think there was a meeting maybe since the report was issued even with the chief to clear that issue up.
Okay.
So, if, unless the board has any specifics or, David, if you want to add anything, we would plan to schedule a public hearing for the couple of things that require a change in the regs.
David Sharp, Chair of the Taxi Advisory Committee. These are suggestions and concerns that have been brought up over the last year that we felt as though it should be brought to the attention of the board. They may or may not be viable, but we wanted to bring those up just to kind of show that there has been active discussion among our committee as well as the taxi community. So, you know, this is what we have come up with so far and available for any questions.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Pretty thorough. I think Libby went through. Rick?
We do have some incoming emails on these subjects, Libby, as I think you know, that seem to be related to the vans, maybe more than anything else, where there's some, what, state licenses? Is that part of what this issue is about when we're talking about some people not following the rules?
I haven't gotten any emails.
You don't have any? Ah.
We get them, you don't.
Not recently, anyway.
Well, got you, Bobby. You know, I don't know what's going on, but I think there have been some concerns.
I've gotten plenty of them. You know, a couple of things, just real quick. One is the, there's no smoking in the cabs. How do people report that, chief? Do they come, do they report it to you? Because I know, I've gotten in several cabs where the cab reeks of smoke and I know the drivers are smoking in when there's nobody in the cab. You know, as a non-smoker, it is a little offensive, so.
I mean, they would call the police department. Or, most likely, a violation like that would be an onsite violation where an officer or somebody would see somebody actually smoking in the cab. There's no, you know, some of these cabs are also personal vehicles. You know, if they're not working, they're going to the grocery store to buy their own groceries or do this or do that. And, you know, that's kind of one of the problems with the model we have here in Nantucket. So, it's very difficult to say what the function is at the time when it's happening. But, in general, if they're in the business of carrying passengers, they're not allowed to be smoking in that vehicle.
So, maybe the solution is to rewrite the bylaw to say the vehicle has to be smoke-free at all times if it's going to be operated as a taxi. Because, you know, it's like when you go to a hotel and you stay in a smoke-free room. It's not smoke-free if the person standing there before you was smoking. So, you know, that's one area that we could look at. As far as the complaints about the other vehicles and this and that, there's no simple fix to this, Rick, except for putting meters in the cabs. And nobody wants meters. So, you know, it's real simple as far as I'm concerned. You put a meter in the cab, if there's not a meter in it, you don't get in it. That's simple. You know, and I understand that the drivers and the owners are concerned about the costs that it will incur and the difficulties, but I run a charter fishing business and I have to deal with federal and state mandated costs and expenditures all the time. And I know they're frustrating, but it's to protect me and my customers. So, if these complaints keep coming around, that's going to be my solution to the problem.
All right.
It's not clear to me, who's operating cabs that are not, that are not under the normal licensing procedure? Is there...
A livery vehicle.
Well, chief, what is a livery vehicle? I guess that's my question.
Maybe I can explain it. The problem is, is there's, you have cabs, taxis, which are subject to local regulation. And the state doesn't have any regulations that govern the operation of taxis. That's all set by the local licensing authorities. Then there's another category of vehicles of transportation that's licensed by the Department of Public Utilities, I think it's called, which is a state agency. And those are vehicles such as Cranberry Transportation, those types of things, A1 Transportation, I think has some of them now. They're given a state license to operate as a tour or livery vehicle. And generally, what they're allowed to do is... And generally, what they're allowed to do is to pick up, by a pre-arranged agreement, somebody at point A and take them to point B. Now, what pre-arranged agreement means is, it doesn't have to be in writing, there's no time link, it can, I can make an agreement with you right here and right now to take you up to the fairgrounds. And that's a pre-arranged agreement for a set price. And so, what's happening is I think some of the operators may be pushing a little close to that line with some of the arrangements that they have, but they're still within the law. The federal Department of Transportation regulates interstate commerce of these vehicles. The state, and the federal law prohibits the states from doing anything but regulating safety on these vehicles. The state DPU has safety rules in place, which means then that the political subdivision, i.e. the town of Nantucket, can't adopt the safety rules because they're already regulated by the state. And so, if they're operating as a taxi, in other words, they pull up and say, "I'll take you over to there," and they solicit a business or do something like that, and we can prove it, we can charge them for violating our taxi regulations. But, for the most part, they're operating, as best we can tell in our investigation, as livery vehicles.
Thank you.
Questions, any other?
No, I think that's the kind of issue that has incoming emails.
Right, right. All right. I'm going to excuse myself and hand the reins to Bobby. My daughters have a band concert at the middle school, and they'll follow the Chief out the door, I think, for the same reason.
Can I have the paper, your paper, Jim?
Oh, yeah. Forget. I have notes on the bone.
That thing's in the fire here.
There you go.
All right, here we go. Is there anything else on the Taxi Advisory? David?
I just want to add that the, it's individual self-policing, basically, that is a concern for a lot of, as it was mentioned, owners and managers, making sure that their drivers are up to speed and acting correctly. However, you can't control that, but at the same time, it's something that should be considered or given a thought to. And, of course, the police department has to enforce this, and the only way they can enforce it is somebody who can complain to them. But, the thing is that a lot of people end up not complaining, or filing a complaint, or they could come three days later after the incident, and it's already gone. So, it's, there's a lot of issues that are difficult to enforce, but we want to make sure that the Board is aware of what's going on out there.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, John St. Laurent, whoa. Hi, John St. Laurent, I'm the President of the Nantucket Taxi Owners Association. And I just want to make, I just want to reiterate on the taxi industry and who represents who. Right now, the Taxi Association, we do things by committee, okay? So, everything is voted on that we would present to the town or the Taxi Advisory Committee through a six-member committee, okay? Right now, at present, we represent 75% of the taxi owners, okay? And none of this is coming from the Taxi Association. The complaints and the comments and these regulation proposals are coming from individual owners outside of the association. So, I just don't want to concrew that all the taxi owners feel this way. When we have something to present, we will vote on it and present it as an association. And just one thing on the smoking thing. The regulation right now states you cannot smoke in the cab when you're waiting for a fare or you have a passenger in the car, okay? And Chief Pittman was right, these are personal vehicles, and this is something that had been brought up at, you know, the public hearing. Thanks a lot.
All right, thank you. Anything else on the taxi? Yeah, could I deviate from this presentation slightly, as long as we have the taxi group here?
Sure. I'll give you a little leeway, it's your first night.
Last year, when we implemented the valet parking program, I know there was a little bit of criticism from the taxi owners about the fact that we were providing, you know, unfair competition, and I'm just wondering if your association would consider, you know, developing some kind of a product, so to speak, that might compete with the valet parking? Some kind of a special, you know, a round-trip fare for people having dinner, or that might be a little bit under the normal market so that you could, you know, you could offer people a choice, because at that point...
Right. I know where you're coming from, and I'm interested in working with the town administration or something like that, but as far as the rates go, they are set by the town and the Board of Selectmen.
But they're set by us, right?
They're set by you.
So, we all agree that it was an interesting program to be had, we could agree that we might experiment with a special fare for certain circumstances.
That would require, yeah, it would be a rate change in a public hearing with a specific proposal.
But your group would be the one to...
Well, we do represent the majority. So, you know, of course, everyone, every owner is totally capable of, you know, speaking for themselves, but we just try to put it together so you don't have so many people. We try to agree on everything and just present it as one unified thing.
Okay, thank you.
Just to follow up on that, then, if you, are you also saying that the concerns as outlined in this memorandum were not supported by your organization?
We never...
I'm a little, I'm not confused, but I'm...
Anything that was proposed on this report did not go through the Taxi Association.
But do you have members of the Taxi Association who sit on the Taxi Advisory Committee as individual taxi owners?
We do have a member on the Taxi Advisory Committee.
Actually, three taxi owners that are on the committee.
Right.
And it's a committee made up of seven people, three taxi owners and four members of the community.
But only one of those taxi owners is a member of the association.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we move to this, Chief, the other thing I, I'm sure Libby's mentioned it, but we're giving them back their taxi spaces.
Signs are going up Friday.
Going up Friday, okay. So, you'll, the spaces that were taken away in December, or the signs that were taken down in December will be going back up Friday along Straight Wharf and along Candle Street and in front of the Visitor Services. Tom?
Hi, Tom Landry, I own a taxi out here, and Bruce, congratulations on your win.
Thank you.
I think what you just presented, Bruce, is part of the concerns of the independents out here, because now, I believe, with this, the cat out of the bag with liveries, these state vans are working the streets of Nantucket, and the town of Nantucket is not collecting a penny. Not a penny. So, these state vans are competing against property tax homeowners paying property taxes and everything else to live out here, from the five gallon, five dollars a gallon of milk, to everything else to live out here, and we're competing against state vans with no regulations and not a penny to the town of Nantucket. How can I compete? And then what you just presented, Bruce, with a cheaper rate for the people going to dinner, that's exactly what these livery vans can now do. They can undercut me to go from the Walwinnet to the Chant de Claire, and then the Chant de Claire back. And, which doesn't make any sense to me, because I'm not sure how we're protecting the Walwinnet, because the concierge just calls a taxi number, and all of a sudden, from nowhere, didn't happen 10 years ago, didn't happen five years ago, but all of a sudden, this taxi number is sending out livery vans, where they can make up any price they want. I charged them $29 for a couple to go from the Walwinnet to the Chant de Claire. The next night, all of a sudden, this van just charged them $20, and $20 to get back. But it's now, it's July 4th weekend, so this van can charge them $45. They can make up any number they want. How does the self-employed have a chance to compete against this? So, while I'm parked on Main Street waiting for a fare, parked with 25 other vans taking up parking spots downtown, all right, they're dispatching these livery vans. So, all the taxis are parked in front of me at the airport, or parked in front of me at the ferry, while they dispatch their state vans. How can I compete? Not a dime to the island of Nantucket. Not a penny. Not a license, who's driving these vans? There's no workman's comp, no one's even checking to see if these drivers have workman's comp or their management's. And then I read in the paper that these, this management company owes a friend of all of ours here $60,000.
Tom, Tom, you're getting off the mark here.
Well, but, I hope we can check on that. I hope we can look into that.
We understand where you're coming from, but we're not going to turn this into a personal attack.
It's not personal, this isn't personal, this is business, Bobby.
You're getting off the mark. We're talking about taxi regulations. The Chief has just told us that, and I'm going to confirm this with him again, that these vehicles are legal to do this under state law. That if someone calls up a livery company and says, "I need a van to take me from my house in Walwinnet to Cisco Brewers and back, what's your rate?" They're legally allowed to go. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, I don't know how we can regulate it if the state says we can't.
Bobby, just to follow up, so, is that good for one passenger or 10, or is there, is the number of passengers an issue at all?
It's not an issue. It has to be for a fixed price, so...
Just for a fixed price.
Yes, much like Cranberry Transportation, for instance, they hire, are hired occasionally to take people to weddings, and they run back and forth just constantly, just come up and go. It's any number of people for a fixed price.
We have a tape change here.
Oh, good.
Go ahead.
Okay, Chief.
Now, what we are working on is defining, for instance, the way that Mr. Landry described what is happening there may possibly fall outside of that, because, you know, they're essentially operating then as a taxi service for a fee. The arrangement has to be made before and for a certain amount, and if it's just the Walwinnet calling up and saying, "Hey, send me a van," and then they fix the price at that point, that might be a problem. But then again, now comes the enforcement problem. You know, these people that are here visiting on the island, you know, do we stop them and interrogate them as to how they called them, why they called them, and all this? It's a very, it's a very touchy issue for the town and its tourism industry. You know, most of these customers don't want to be interrogated by the police, and certainly are not going to come back and testify. So, it is a challenge, but, you know, we are trying to deal with that.
Thank you, Chief.
I'm hoping we can also consider the liability that now the concierge of this hotel is calling a taxi, a taxi number.
Hold on, Tom.
And so, then there's an accident.
Have you, you and I have gone back and forth on this for over a year.
A little bit.
I don't know how you expect us to fix it, because as the Chief said, he can, he has to catch him in the act. I think part of what you're telling us, you should also be telling to the concierge. I mean, if I find out that the concierge at the White Elephant is sending charters to a bootleg charter company, I'm going to be all over them. You should be all over the concierge at the hotels. If they're sending fares to companies that aren't true taxi companies, short of putting meters in every cab so that we know that, we can tell our visitors, "Hey, if there's no meter in the cab, don't get in it," then I don't know any other solution to this, because not only is it companies that have livery plates, a lot of the hotels have their own vehicles. The White Elephant, the Walwinnet, the Nantucket Inn, they all send their vehicles. If somebody, if you're staying at the Walwinnet house and you want to take, go to town to get an ice cream cone, they'll put you in the van and drive you to town. So, you want us to get rid of those next too, because you're losing the fare on that? I mean, I don't know what the solution is here for us.
Bobby, I was in front of this board probably four years ago with a meter, presenting a situation with a meter that worked on a zone system. It's very easy to, for someone to make a quick phone call to see if these services have workman's comp, because any driver behind those wheels are supposed to have some kind of workman's comp, those companies are supposed to have workman's comp. That's easy to verify. I take credit cards. I'm one of the few companies that do take credit cards, and like yourself, I believe you got a 1099K in the mail, so you can claim that on your taxes at the end of the year. That credit card goes to my license, license to transport. That 1099K, license to transport, Tom Landry with the Social Security number.
Yeah, I know how it works.
Understandable. So, anyone taking credit cards, that credit card should go under the license to transport's owner, not management companies. There's no such thing as management companies overseeing that license, taking credit cards, I believe.
We, we get, I think we get the gist of this.
Well, my point though, Bobby, is if we all had to take credit cards, that's the solution.
Tom, Tom, stop. You need to go back to the taxi advisory committee with this and try to work it out with them. Your, how many taxi licenses do we have in Nantucket? 60. I've gotten three emails from three taxi drivers about this. You were one, two others, that's it. Three out of 60 complained to me. When 30 out of 60 complained about this, obviously, we know we have a problem. I don't know, there's no simple fix for this for you, you know, short of putting meters in the cabs. And David, unless you can help me out here, I don't know what, I mean, we can, we can go back and forth on this all night, but I don't see any solution to it.
One of the main, main issues that we started out with three years ago was meters. And we reviewed it, and what we concluded was that there were certain issues that were preventing this, such as somebody coming to calibrate a new meter when a car broke down, and let's say, for example, somebody like Tom who has one car, and he has to replace his car, and get a meter and to calibrate the meter for the new car, it's not, you simply can't get somebody over here overnight. And it also was, a lot of it to do with the cost to, to some of the individual owners, whereas places like Boston and New York, it's sort of passed on through the company. So, it's something that we can, you know, we've concluded at the moment, it's just not a viable option, which is part of the report, but obviously, it's something that, you know, is out there.
So, that sort of takes us back to the beginning, as Bobby said, that it's a problem, we don't have an easy answer, and that's that. Let's be realistic.
With the state regulation the way it is, unless we can come up with some way to supersede the state regulation to make the booking have to be 24 hours in advance, or something along those lines, and then even then, I don't know how we would control it or monitor it. I don't know any simple solution to this problem. There's no short fix.
Well, I think through workman's comp and through the 1099Ks, it could be, it could be an angle that...
Do you want us to send a police officer around every cabin, say, show me your, your worker's comp certificate, Tom?
We have to show our license on a regular basis to the police officer out at the airport, our license, our license, our badge, and put this driver's name on an insurance policy, which if you have workman's comp, I think that's...
We're not going to, this isn't a public hearing on how we're going to fix this. Obviously, it's an important issue to you, and I completely understand that. It's your livelihood, and I don't want to make short of it, but I don't, short of having it...
Put on as an agenda item for down the road to discuss it in a public hearing. Right now, we're getting one person's input on it. We really need to hear all sides of it.
Yeah, I think at this point, you know, it's a chance to bring it forward. We understand the issue better, but at some point tonight, Tom, we have to say thank you very much, and we have to move on.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. All right, moving on. Next item, Department of Public Works brush-cutting update. Chief, good luck with the concert.
I asked Kara to come in tonight and talk about this. You guys asked for this, I think, last week.
I'm excited.
Talked about it a bit.
As one driver around the town, I just got so enthusiastic, I think Kara ought to share the good news.
It is, it's really good news. They did over 15 miles of brush-cutting this winter. Surfside Road from the high school down to the beach, South Shore Road, Pulpus Bike Path, Hoix Hollow, Nobodyer Road, Tom Nevers, all the way down to the park. Maticet Road from the DPW out to Second Bridge, My Comet Road, Hummock Pond Road, and they have been able to go back and do some dressing in areas that they, they haven't been able to get to. Five men, I really have to compliment the General Foreman, John Smith, and the Working Foreman, Paul Boucher. They have done an amazing job this winter, and very, very excited about how much work they were able to get done.
And with that new mower, they won't sprout back up as easily, and we're going to keep them under control?
We did have the discussion that they should be very aggressive about how much they took, and it would allow us to mow a little bit more and possibly keep the brush back a little bit... back a little bit, little bit longer.
Anyway, I, I just, as one person, I noticed it, and I want to say thanks.
Oh, thank you. I will thank the crew.
All right, Kara, thank you. Libby?
Yes. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, Whitey, I didn't mean to cut you off, I didn't see you.
Now, what about the daffodils?
I actually saw you talking to your sister on TV.
Oh, good.
And I, as an aside, I had a meeting with the Nantucket Biodiversity Initiative about invasive species. I'm still struggling with how to let the daffodils die back before we can mow, because we do have to keep the grass cut, so be happy to talk to Sally and see what we can figure out. But yeah, that is, that is an issue, because we do have to get the roads mowed, and, and it's counterproductive to allowing the daffodils to actually die back before we start mowing.
It's a, it's a catch-22, Whitey, because if you let the daffodils completely die, then the grass gets to the height where it doesn't spread out, and you get holes in your, in the, in the, on the side of the roads, because the grass goes to seed, so.
We actually have to mow it twice. We have to mow it, and then mow it and back it. It doesn't, we have to mow it when it's shorter so it mulches instead of.
And then why do you have citizens who'll say, gee whiz, you know, we had all those nice spring wildflowers, and don't you want to mow after they die? I mean, they're, you can't win for losing, but.
Exactly.
It's a, it's a great battle.
It is a catch-22.
Planting back into thick stuff, right, Whitey?
Well, what, what happens is that these kids from the school are given these bulbs to go plant them, and if you notice going out the Sconsett Road, they're back in the bushes rather than out where the cutting is.
Right.
And so if, that works in a lot of places, you see, then they can reseed themselves.
Right.
Okay, any, anything else for Kara? Okay.
Thank you.
Libby?
Okay, I wanted to give you a goals update for your 2011, 2012 goals. You had actually, we were calling them objectives, there were three objectives, each with associated goals, this is what they were, and I think I had Erica send you the update that I prepared. So I know that, to be perfectly frank, your eyes tend to glaze over a bit when I go through each item, so how about if I don't do that, unless you'd like me to do that, or if you have any specific questions? I will say that we are getting to the time when we'll annually look at new goals or objectives for this, for 2012, 13, and at that time, I'm sure we will also review these to determine what should be put forward, what is considered complete, what we're not going to do anymore, things like that. Just overall, I guess, the improved fiscal management objective, almost every goal listed there is either complete or in progress, and the one that I would really point out is item five, goal five, which was to achieve an unqualified audit opinion for fiscal eleven that was achieved. With regard to objective two, the long-term wastewater water quality plan, that will move forward more expeditiously now, as soon as we get the CWMP update contract in place. That is subject to borrowing, so we have a number of borrowings that we're going to need to do for some of the capital projects that were approved at town meeting. And I sent, yeah, Mr. Former Chairman, a scope of services for that, maybe, maybe a couple of months ago, and what we had talked about was that we'd bring it back to the board to just.
I think it'd be helpful, because it's, it's a big deal, and we ought to know how we're going to go about it, and what, what the activities are.
Yep, so we'll get that on an agenda shortly. And then objective three, long-term municipal facilities management, there are some things that were completed, some things that were not, with regard to that particular objective, and the big one is going to be going forward, I think, for 12 and 13, is a municipal building strategy involving Twenty South Water, two fairgrounds, maybe Thirty Seven Washington, or just long-term plans for town offices.
We, we thought we were on a pretty good track with that, but when the FinCom gave Twenty South Water a negative recommendation, it kind of.
So we got to regroup and get back at it?
We got to regroup, and I've got it on, yep, and I've got it on my list of things to do. Mr. O'Connor, for example, was helpful on the Twenty South Water, sort of informal work group that we had, that met a couple of times, two or three times over the year of 2011, and he agreed before the meeting to continue on, and I've got some other citizens that have agreed as well.
They can't go away, they got to stay on board.
Right, there's, it's going to be more citizen participation than staff.
Do you have one question, Bobby?
Go ahead.
Back on the wastewater plan, Libby, it says the paperwork for the state revolving loan fund application for this project, does that refer to the seven hundred thousand for the study?
Yes.
Ah, okay. So that means the borrowing comes at the presumed subsidized rate, is that the issue?
Correct.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I probably didn't say that very well.
I just want to be clear.
It would be, yeah.
Yes, I scratched my head about this, is whether we're actually using these goals and objectives, or are these just something where, I mean, how, how are we going to use them? Is Libby supposed to be measured by the accomplishment of these? Are these the right objectives, the right goals? How do we, how do we use that? I mean, from an overall management of the town?
Well, I'll see if I can shed some light on it from my position. When I first came on the board, we had thirty-nine goals and objectives, and I felt that it was unrealistic and unobtainable to have staff go in thirty-nine different directions. So we decided, as a board last year, that we would look at the goals and objectives and say, what were the top three priorities for this year? Staff has done that, as far as I'm concerned. Now, we all didn't expect these three goals and objectives to be met in twelve months, at least I didn't, I didn't think anyone else did either, so they're continuing goals at this point, and when we sit down as a board here in the near future and come up with the next year's goals and objectives, we can add new ones and remove some as need be. I mean, the, the audit one, to me, is pretty well taken care of, so that one could come off the top priority, and we could add whatever we feel as a board, we need to add as the top priority. As far as how do we, I guess, grade Libby on how she handled these? Yeah, I guess it's, it's part of the.
It's part of the firm.
Yeah, it was part of the.
Up front.
Right, that was what we said we would evaluate her on, was these three goals and objectives, her and staff.
May I interject on that? What you also discussed was that some of these goals are yours.
Correct.
And while town administration can facilitate many of them, some of them are discussions and policy issues that the board needs to decide. What we also discussed was, and one of the reasons why we kind of tried to shorten them up a little bit, is that many things happen during the year that put these goals off track, and I have a running list in my office of items that came up over the year that put the goals off track. So I would slightly object to a judgment of the town manager's performance based entirely on the accomplishment or not of these goals. Partially, yes, but entirely, not fair.
I correct myself, I apologize.
It's okay.
Yeah, and I think the firm has these and other things in it, so it is not solely on that.
There are constantly issues that arise that take us off these, these are, they're just what they say, goals, they're not requirements.
Right.
I, I found it was very difficult to write the review using the goals, and how we were, it, it really didn't enable me to say what, just pass or fail, it, it really didn't enable me to expand on the manager's review. I felt it was, it was too confining, and, and not very, yeah, because some of them, I said, well, that's our problem, why, why am I judging Libby on our problems? So I, I feel that we have to look at these more carefully, and say, what do we really want them for? What are we going to use them for? And, yeah, thirty-eight's too much, but three may be too little.
Well, we had three, we probably ended up with twenty-three, because of all the other issues that arose. You know, a lot, as Libby said, this, you know, I, I can think of a dozen just off the top of my head that sidetracked us from all of these things, as well as anyone else. The wind turbine, for one, took up half the year, and it wasn't even on the list. So, and we're right back to where we started with it five years ago. So that one's off the table now, but the airport issues were another that took up an immense amount of time, you know, we could go on and on here. So I, when I wrote the evaluation, I didn't use it entirely as how I thought I would grade staff, it was, you know, did, I looked at it as a method to, I don't, I can't, I'm having a hard time putting it to words, Whitey, but I, I understand what you're saying, is that you can't just do an evaluation on strictly three goals, and, and you shouldn't, you should write it according to how you feel you, you know.
There's lots of space to write.
Right.
And also, I didn't mean to give an update on the goals that had anything at all to do with the evaluation, since that's not on the agenda, but the other, obviously, purpose of the goals for town administration is to have items that we are meant to focus on achieving over the year, with your help, that theoretically anyway, is primarily the focus for the year. So that when other things come up that aren't prioritized in the goals, we say, has to be put off, we're doing these goals this year, we'll do this other thing next year, except that doesn't happen very often, because these items that arise tend to be viewed as priority items by the board, and sometimes others, and sometimes by town administration. Sometimes there's things that merely have to get done, and then the goals have to take a backseat.
Looks like you have a list on page three here, of, of other current projects, so they're sort of laid out for us.
And that's just the tip of the iceberg, by the way.
Well, I, I, I think we have to think this thing through. I mean, either we're going to have goals, and we follow them, or we don't have goals, and how many do we want, and then why are we doing it in the first place? I think we have to define the problem, or not bother with this goals and objectives.
When we have our goals and objectives meetings, these are things that we'll be able to discuss at great length, Whitey. I agree with you, I mean, you know, do we, do, do they need to be considered goals? Or we just have objectives and strategic plans more along the lines of, you know, it, it, it's a work in progress, I guess is the best.
Yeah, well, I think there's certain things that we'd all agree on are high priority items, and if they, if we all agree on them, and, and we feel they have to be dealt with, then they should be on here. Because then, we say to the project, the town management, yeah, we have to focus on, on these particular items. And then that provides guidance.
Well, I believe that, that's what we did last spring. We sat down as a group, and we said, we all wrote down what we thought were the top three goals, and then we pulled them together, am I correct, Rick?
Yeah, absolutely.
And these were the three ones that got the most votes, and that's how they ended up on the list. I, for one, never expected to achieve these three goals in a year, I figured we'd start the process, which I believe we have. So as far as I'm concerned, we're, you know, we've met our goals for this year, and are continuing down the road.
Yeah, and I think we tried to do, Whitey, what you're describing, I think Libby did spend a lot of time trying to focus on these, and move them along properly, so, you know.
Okay, anything else on goals and objectives?
No, other, unless you have questions about anything up here, but sometime soon, and I guess I will talk with you and the chair shortly about this, we'll schedule some dates to talk about 2012, 2013.
Sounds good.
About?
2012, 2013 goals.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so we have a full.
And the things that you're mentioning.
Discussion of, and, and try to make it into more of a management tool, because I think it's important to provide the guidance to the town management.
Okay.
Thank you. I have one more item, it's not, not listed on here, but I wanted to just mention it. For next week's agenda, I wanted to review quickly some of the items that are on there. There's all the usual ahead-of-time stuff, minutes warrants, pending contracts, we have a state ethics disclosure issue, we have the hunting association asking for authorization of the town manager to sign their MISA application, Mass and Dangerous Species Act application for the shooting range, they're ready for that application, they've got it ready to sign. Jetties concession has a request to expand its serving hours, and that is going to Park and Rec tomorrow, and depending on what Park and Rec says about that, it'll come to you next week. Then there's a.
Just, just, this is like going, closing at, instead of nine, at ten or something like that?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't bring it.
I think it's, instead of starting to serve at five, no?
They want to serve earlier in the day, eleven to eleven. Right now it's five to nine, or something like that.
They want to be able to serve alcohol on the patio during the lunchtime.
Okay.
We have a number of public hearings, and they range from shellfish grants to rate increase at Our Island Home, public assembly permit, actually that's withdrawn, a new mobile food unit license, some common victular issues, liquor issues. I'm reporting to you on a bunch of meetings that I'm going to tomorrow and Friday. We have the Article 68 work groups final report, and there's probably some kind of a work plan that subsequently we'll need to figure out. The airport has requested an expansion of the forensic audit, so we'll have some discussion about that, and hopefully an update by then of the original forensic audit, and I think that was it, we didn't add anything later. So just for your thinking preparation, that's it.
Sounds like a busy night. Okay, anything else, Libby?
That's it.
Okay, moving on to the selectmen reports and comments, let's start with the 2012, 2013 Board Committee Liaison Work Group representative appointments. Do we usually do these now, or do we?
Well, it's been inconsistent in the past, sorry. Yeah, generally you want to have a full board, and what we, what we've done, I think, for the last couple of years, is left the list out somewhere in the office.
Yeah, we sort of indicate interest, and sometimes we have more than one, and all that kind of stuff, right?
The one, the two committees that I see right now that just are vacated are, well, they're not really vacated, but Michael was on the audit committee, Rick, you were on the audit committee with him as the chair, I'm assuming.
But, assuming Tyler would fill the chair for all, and one other seat.
Right, but I think, until we actually do the reappointments, I think it would be important for you to stay on that, at that level. I would ask for any input from the rest of the board members, but you've been there all year, and I think it's important to have your presence still there.
Happy to do it.
The other one that Michael served on was the PEG channel, and so right now we're without a representative to that. Is that something, Greg, that we need to fill right away, or can that wait a week or two?
That can certainly wait.
Okay. So the list, if, if Erica, if you could put a copy of the list in everybody's box, and we could all initial it like we've done in the past, and turn them back in, we can put it on the agenda and, and go through the list.
They can go in everybody's box, but maybe we can leave like the main one out, so you can all see who wants what.
Put it on the table.
Yeah, we'll put it on the signing table.
I, I have to recuse myself from the Human Services Contact Review Committee, that's one problem. And then are we going to have a rep for the Energy Committee?
We have it in the past, have we?
No, I think Whitey, as he pointed out last week, had become a member in between sessions, and so we never felt, I think we had to have a specific liaison appointed under those circumstances, so.
I would like to have a little more of a discussion of this when we have a full board about these reps to these boards, because I, having been on at some of these meetings where I'm there as, as a rep, or even as a private citizen, I find that the committees have a tendency to look to that person as if they're looking to this board, and they take liberties and assume things that aren't necessarily the right assumptions. And they take liberties and assume things that aren't necessarily the right assumptions. I've had, I've had it happen with the CPC board, where, because I'm the selectman member of that board, they just assume that if I say I agree with it, then the board agrees with it, and that's not the case. So, I, I would, I'd like to have a discussion as a group about that, before we just go and put liaisons and appointed members on these boards.
And in that case, I think Libby is working on a program to come back about, thinking about our planning efforts in the energy area that might interface with that.
Yes, and we'll, Greg and I were talking about that this afternoon. We had hoped to have something on your agenda for next week, but it looks more like we need another, a little bit more time to develop it. So, it'll probably be on either April 25th or May 5th.
I think, Bobby, you're right. We need a discussion about how, the protocols of how we act when we are on these committees, because if you don't have reps, the information doesn't get back to us. And you can't, I mean, you can't rely on some of these committees to keep us informed.
Well, I, there's where I disagree with you, Whitey. I think that we can't real, we not only should, we should mandate that they report to us on a certain period of time and give us updates. I mean, there are committees that are appointed by this board, and they have specific tasks. And I think whoever the chair of the committee is, needs to have a discussion with either this board or with the chair of this board, and understand their obligations as the chair of that committee. And I believe that all these committees should have, at the minimum, quarterly reports to the board as to their update and where they're going. I don't think it should be our responsibility to have to go to their meetings. I think they should come and report to us.
So, we might be able to systematize some way to make sure that happens.
Well, often, I find that there are things that occur in the meetings that they, they might not, they might not think of as important to bring to the group, and you sort of have to say, say to yourself, "Hey, I think that's important to bring up." Like, you're fin fishing the other day, you know? You begin to get something like that up to the board here and motivate them, rather than have it languish.
So, there's a little bit of give and take. We have to--
Again, this is something why I thought we should have a full board and have a discussion about it, and then, whatever the board decides, we'll do. Anything else on that?
Nope.
Okay, I guess we'll get the list together. Everyone will initial it, and then--
We'll put it on the agenda for maybe the 25th.
Right, and at that time, Whitey, we'll figure out exactly what we're going to do about liaisons, and if, and if anyone has a board that they think that's not on this list, that they think we should have a liaison on, why don't you write it on the list, and then put your initials next to it, if you wanted to serve on that, and that would--
Right, and then, we're all free to go to the meetings, anyway.
Right, but--
Well, it gives you a different status when you go, if you're a liaison, you're actually, you're a non-voting member of the group, rather than somebody that's in, you know, you can sit at the table, but you can't vote.
That's true, Whitey.
Yeah. Well, yeah.
And something comes up, and they say, "Well, you can bring that up on the public comment." It still provides things.
Okay. All right. Committee reports. Any committee reports? Whitey, I'm sure you must have one. While you're going through your list, I have one. We had a meeting of the Coastal Management Plan Committee. We came up with a preliminary plan as to how we're going to tackle this. We're going to finalize the concept at our next meeting, which is April 23rd, and then we will make a presentation to the Board of Selectmen on May 2nd. One issue that we do have with that board is that there has been quite of, not quite a bit, we've had several emails going back and forth about appointed board members being able to serve and having conflicts on the board. I think because it is a new board, we need to make the board members special municipal employees, like we've done with other boards, so that they can continue to do their careers and still serve on the board. So, I don't know if we can do that at this point, or if we have to do it, put it on the agenda, but it's been brought up by one attorney in town and a couple of the members. We had two members that weren't there, one because he's still not sure if he can serve on the board.
I believe that one of the members is actively talking with the State Ethics Commission. And we did run the issue of special municipal employee status by town council. Generally, that's a request that would come from someone on the committee, and it's purely up to the board's discretion as to whether or not to give a group that status. You don't give it to just one individual, you'd give it to the entire group.
Right, give it to the whole board.
So, that's something to think about, but I think we're kind of waiting to hear back from this one individual.
So, if you did that, it would be for the life of the committee, since it's a, has a life. It's not a forever committee. That might work more conveniently than another committee, where the members might change.
Correct.
Yeah.
Bruce?
I, well, I had an issue I wanted to raise, and, you know, Patty said this would be the appropriate time to do it, after the committee reports are finished, so.
Whitey?
Yeah, a couple of things. I was at the Disability Committee, and they were concerned, because we have disability placards that go into cars that are actually only Nantucket-based things. And if you go off-island, you can't use that. You have to get a state disability tag. So, this is, this came up, and then we got into the HIPAA regulations, where you're determining who gets a disability tag, and what is the privacy that has to be maintained, because you get under the HIPAA regulations. So, they're struggling with that, which was kind of interesting. And I, at the Energy Committee meeting, they're struggling with, how do they, how are they going to manage this? Because you have various, you have the town, the town committee, you've got the Energy Committee, and how is all of this going to be managed, so that we can move the Nantucket Energy Program forward in a useful manner? And so, that, we need, we need to come up with something, some way of putting our arms around that, because we, energy is here, and we can't ignore it.
Anyone else? Bruce, the floor is yours.
Thank you. As I think you all know, parking is an issue that's near and dear to me, and so, others of us, so I guess we could consider this the ad hoc parking committee report. I have three, three proposals that I, that I have developed, and I bring them up tonight mainly because I think time is of the essence. I mean, the season's going to be upon us, and if we're going to do, get anything accomplished, we have to get working on it pretty promptly. The first thing I think we should do is approach National Grid formally as a board, and ask them for permission to use their vacant lot as a temporary, one-year-only experimental parking lot. And by the happiest of coincidences, I spoke to both Dan Wolf and Tim Madden today, who had called to congratulate me on the election, and both of them enthusiastically supported the idea, and said that they would be happy to have it be a joint request, either by, you know, making it clear that they were copied in on the letter, or, you know, perhaps even beyond that. But, they, Dan in particular indicated, no, he believes it's an economic development issue of some significance, and we should push hard on it. I think both of them have regular dealings with National Grid, and would be willing to step up for us. So, I, I don't know what the proper procedure is to suggest that, but I'd like to suggest it as strongly as I can, and hope that we'll get moving on it as fast as we can. And I, if, you know, as needed, I would be happy to, you know, get involved myself and draft the letter, or take whatever direction is necessary.
Yeah, it seems to me, this, you know, National Grid, it's very much a political issue, and they ought to be responsive to the people who help them set their rates. And, you know, I would encourage, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but encourage Bruce to work with the town administration, get a letter drafted, get underway. That's sort of my reaction. If you don't do something, then nothing's going to happen.
It can't hurt to ask.
Yeah.
And maybe with the added pressure, we could, you know, let's, we'll see. If they give us permission, then we can figure out how to make it work. Anything to alleviate or to open up more parking in town would definitely help everyone.
Right.
Including the government.
And you start by asking, so.
Now, do I need to make a motion to the fact that I feel that the board should send a letter?
Good question. Rick? Does he need to make a motion?
Well, you know, my sense at the moment, when the letter's ready, we can deal with it. And I think if we have no objection, the four of us here tonight, we would, you can touch base with Patty, but we're encouraging you, there's no objection, and let's get started on drafting the letter. That's the first step. That would be my sense.
Draft the letter, and then have--
Don't come back here, let's work on it and get it out.
And the letter would be from this body?
From, yeah, Patty would sign it.
Yeah. One sort of item here is that we have had meetings with National Grid here concerning a multitude of concerns. And they've been happy with what we've been doing, and so, we ought to coordinate that carefully, because, you know, we're asking other things from them. And actually, the president of National Grid was supposed to come here, but she couldn't because, so, we have to figure out how best to manage this.
I would suggest that you vote on the letter, so that in the letter, we can say, "On such and such a date, the Board of Selectmen voted to..."
Right. So, when we get a draft back, we could vote then.
Yeah, we can put it on next week's agenda, if we can get ready by then.
Why don't we do this? Why don't, Bruce, you get together with administration, write the letter, talk to Patty as well, because she's the chair. We'll bring the letter in, we'll read the letter, we'll vote on it formally at next week's meeting, and get it off to National Grid. Does that work for everyone?
That would be great, and I can, I can count on Libby's help with drafting a letter, considering, I suspect it has to have a certain--
Yeah, you'll have to work on it, and remember that I'm not here tomorrow or Friday.
Okay.
And Monday's a holiday.
Okay. They're pretty good about--
But it'll be on the agenda next Wednesday.
If you write the letter and send it to Erica, Erica tweaks it. That's what she's done for me.
Okay.
So, I just throw you under the bus, Erica, I'm sorry.
Well, you can get it to you by Friday. I can get a number of these other placards.
Have there been previous correspondence with National Grid on this issue?
Not as a board. Did we--
Informally.
Informally, yeah.
Yeah, I think maybe informally. I don't recall--
And you might call Patty tomorrow and ask her, because I think that she had some correspondence with them, not as the board member, but--
Well, she was dealing with them for, on the Dreamland issue, and we talked as a board in another session, another forum about this.
Right.
But, it just hasn't sort of bubbled up to this point, so.
Do we know who we correspond with specifically? I mean, is there a--
I don't. We'll have to find out.
You know, I would think you worked through the--
Presence.
Yeah, or through Dan Wolf and Tim Madden. I think they probably know the lever, or that's one idea, anyway.
Whitey?
Yeah. This is all part of the woke square process, and there has been conversations--
Yeah, but--
--between the planning board and National Grid on this subject. So, I think we have to understand these things.
I understand that, but I think that what Bruce is looking at, and he can correct me if I'm wrong here, is just a short-term thing.
Right, this is not part of the woke square development.
Yeah, we're not looking at a long-term, ten-year--
This is the vacant lot.
We're looking like, okay, let us have the land for, until you figure out what you're going to do with the land, let us use it for parking, once you figure it out.
Right.
And if, depending on the results of the experiment, it might encourage us to pursue other initiatives, and, but it would be, it's a perfect test tube, to test whether parking will make a difference. You'll either say yes, or no, or maybe, and we'll figure it out from there. Anything else?
One of, one of the other issues that I, had come to mind for me, came up tonight. I think we might want to approach the Taxi Association and ask them if they would like, if they think valet parking is unfair to them, ask them if they would like to come up with a proposal that would level the playing field. And I, again, I don't know exactly how we do that, but they were here, so they heard us. And then, the third one is, at one of your hearings last year, Chief Pittman had made a suggestion about slightly changing the parking regulation, the parking enforcement, so that instead of having enforcement end at six o'clock, I think he was, he was going to push it back a little bit. And I think that would make a significant difference. I think restaurant workers come in to work around four, and if we stop enforcing at six, they can park their car at four o'clock and basically be there the entire night. Whereas, if we, if we, if we added another half hour or hour to enforcement, they wouldn't be able to do that. And I think it might free up, they'd park further out of town or in the town lot, and it might free up some spaces.
We could put that on an agenda item in the near future and have a discussion with the chief, and do that require a public hearing to change tech, to change--
The parking regs?
Parking regs, or is it just administrative?
You'd have to have a public hearing.
But could we discuss, we could, we could discuss it with him before we had the public hearing, just--
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, usually, what, it's a two-week cycle, by the time you place the ad and get the hearing?
It's three weeks, and then you have, you do whatever you're going to do with the hearing, and then it's another couple of weeks of advertising, and you set a date. So, do, he will not be here next week, school vacation week.
The chief will not be.
Correct. So, maybe we can schedule this for the 25th.
Yep.
Okay.
We could try for that.
Is it appropriate to have informal discussions with the chief? Like, if I wandered over and had a cup of coffee with him, just to remind him? Is that, that's okay?
Um, yes, but you should review the charter about discussions with employees by the board members. I'll review it with you later.
Okay, thank you.
And usually, if you're going to speak to a department head or an employee, it's good to go through administration, let them know.
It's very tactful.
Okay.
Yes. I don't know of a time when I've said, "No, you can't do that."
Okay, that's fine.
It's, there's a protocol.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's see. I think we've covered everything. Anything else for any board members?
No.
Nothing else? Entertain a motion?
A motion to adjourn? So moved, this vice chairman?
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Jeez. I'm not that busy.